Oh. There's no blood. Yeah. I knew they'd come along one day. So. I'm going back to my business.
You're not in that.
They all got stymolaged, so we'll wait.
Now they have to re.
Well, it's actually after four months. Anyway, go in and leave.
What's that?
Uh.
You might have to go back three months later.
For jury duty.
That's probably thirty.
It's a different thing.
Yeah.
And I get, we had a bad. Was it it's.
But.
Some kids.
Kind of like.
Okay.
I went to the city's.
Yeah.
Challenge. When they on Tuesday morning.
Yeah.
Put me up. Three man flowers. Well, I didn't know where you ran out. And he's strong there.
I did run out.
It's okay.
Well, Tyler, I made that.
I'm doing all right.
Good.
Okay, it is eight o'clock, so we will call the meeting order and stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has had its own original standing on the job. In the visible with the liberty of justice. Okay. Any public discussion this morning? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the agenda minutes. Motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Any discussion on the motion? If not, in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, up to drainage. Uh, it is after eight o'clock, so we need a motion to open the public hearing for extending the moratorium ordinance on applications to construct utility scale energy systems. So a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is open, do we have any public comment on the proposed extension of moratorium? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
May I just enter?
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, but just want to make sure the notice of the public hearing was published, this would have been in June four of twenty twenty five in the Sway City and Bancroft paper and June five, so it was published. Notice of this hearing was published correctly.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. We need a motion to close.
Do we need to read it before we close?
This is, or.
It's an extension night if.
Okay.
That's up to the board, I don't know if there's anybody.
Okay. Okay.
If you want it read.
No, that's fine.
It can be.
No, that's fine.
So that's the first.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed who.
Uh, Stecker.
Sorry.
Had the motion, we don't have a second.
I had a second.
Oh, okay. Second by Wachter. Okay, any discussion on closing the public hearing? Not roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. Motion carries.
There's the first.
First.
This would be if they want to waive that.
Okay, we are up to discussion decision to approve first consideration of solar moratorium ordinance. And we'll get a motion in a second, and I'll read the ordinance. Uh, motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Okay. To approve the first reading of Cassuth County's proposed zoning ordinance extension amendment extending the moratorium on the processing of any applications to construct large scale or utility scale solar energy systems or associated facilities anywhere in Cassuth County to December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Everyone understand the ordinance extension? And if so, roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. Motion carries. And then we have discussion decision to waive the second and third consideration of solar moratorium ordinance.
I'll make motion that we waive the second and third.
Okay, we have a motion by Wachter.
Second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion, and I will read this, is to waive the second and third readings of Cassuth County's proposed zoning ordinance extension amendment extending the moratorium on the processing of any applications to construct large scale or utility scale solar energy systems or associated facilities anywhere in Cassuth County to December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. If everyone understands that.
So what's the disadvantage of not waiving? Is there more publishing or anything?
We just, uh.
Just having on our agenda.
Having on the agenda week, week to week.
Yeah, two more weeks after this.
I guess I'm gonna go against it in that context, just give somebody a chance to come in if they want.
Sure. Great. Any further discussion then, or? Uh, roll call vote, please, then.
Haas.
No.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. Okay, motion carries four to one. Now we are up to. I believe I said drainage earlier, but.
You did.
It was, it was listed off. I just realized that, but it was listed on here twice, and, okay. Now we're up to drainage, so, no, you're fine. Okay, it is after eight oh five, so we can have the continued completion hearing for DD sixty sub four. Presentation by Tyler with Boltman Mink. Yeah, 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 we just, we'll just close it from the bottom. Thanks, Doug and Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you, lights, which way, Doug? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, good morning, all, this is the continued completion hearing for Drainage District sixty sub four uh, maintenance improvement project. This was continued from the last time, there was some work not completed by the contractor as far as finished work, and also to give landowners the opportunity to go and tabulate additional efforts and damages that they had suffered as a result of the project. Again, this is to satisfy Iowa code for the completion of the the contract with contractor. This would also, uh, at the completion of this, then release the retainage to the contractor of the last ten percent of their payment thirty days after the acceptance of the work, and that also starts the one year maintenance period where the contractor could be made to come back from failures in their workmanship. The map that I have displayed here again is the different colored sections of crops that had been damaged as a result of the work. There was also a tabulation provided on the completion, uh, in the completion packet as well. I know that there was at least one additional claim for damage that had been turned in to our office. Other than that.
Tyler.
Yes, I have a, you talked about damage. I have damage, cost me a tire on my field cultivator, I mean, I have a bill for.
Yes, and that, that.
Give it to you or no?
I, I, let me see, I, I think. Had you turned that into our office yesterday?
No, I stopped and talked to you.
Okay. Thank you. So this is additional claim for, claim for damage, I will read it here. Since they didn't come back and level like they were supposed to, we used a chisel plow for two hours, a skid loader for one hour, and a field cultivator for two hours to try and level ruts. I feel my time and equipment takes a beating is worth, and then there's two hours of tractor and chisel, three hundred dollars, two hours field cultivator and tractor, three hundred dollars, one hour skid loader. Is that, is that?
Hundred.
Hundred, okay, for a total of seven hundred dollars, that was submitted by Bill Wallstead uh, on the Richard Johnson ground. There is also a, uh, an invoice here for a tire for five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you, Doug.
And then, yes, there was also one submitted from Michael Wallstead. That says bill to be paid by Boltman Mink for field repairs to Drainage District sixty seven four, labor and cleanup of a thousand dollars, chisel plow of five hundred dollars, field leveller five hundred dollars, and a tire repair for two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Enter that as a damage, I'm not, if someone, if, uh, Michael'd like to speak to, I'm not sure the the meaning of paid by Boltman Mink, that was, as the engineer, we wouldn't be responsible for. Payments of damages, that would be a, a decision, a discussion of whether or not that was unavoidable due to the work or something based on contractor negligence. So those are an unavoidable part of the project, those are what are used for grade control.
So you can't pick a tire up?
Not easily, or, or make sure that we find all of them, that's.
Is that on GPS?
But they get disturbed from where they, the, the thought is that they all totally get destroyed, I've never seen one of those come back.
I picked it up, one's here, four more, nothing. And I'm sure there's one.
But any place where we use them to, to hold grade, yeah.
I'm sure you, if you have a GPS where you put that.
Again, I, I've never seen that be a problem.
Okay. I guess someone lost a tire due to that. If ransom would have come back, level did a job, which they didn't, I don't know why they didn't show up, but.
I, I can't, I can't speak for them, they, they were letting know the, the issues.
Okay.
I want bill for cleaning up those weight buckets they had, I don't know if they, thinking some guy removed that they used, uh.
Oh.
And then steel bands that they had wrapped around.
Okay.
That they had wrapped around the tiles.
This is Mark, pardon me, Mark and Pam Reynolds. Six hours picking up steel strips and buckets out of the field and ditch, six hours, dimes thirty dollars an hour for a hundred and eighty dollars.
Well, for us, it's, I got one too.
Right.
Mostly it's the fact that we didn't even plant anything there this year because they left such a mess.
So we're claiming. So eight hundred dollars work with skid loader.
That was last spring, March, when they should have come out, and they were looking for tile a year ago in March. And they managed to just dig holes every little ways anywhere from a hundred feet to a hundred yard. With about a three foot wide bucket scratching across the top of the ground, and when they got done, they sort of just took a dozer and they had piles of dirt this high and holes this deep, but they didn't bother to finish it, and I thought, I was stupid enough to think that, well, gee, they must know what they're doing. So about a month and a half later, when it's muddier than crap, I'm out there with my little skid loader, I had filled them holes in and leveled those humps out, so we can get over it was our plan and our prayer. And I spent about eight hours fighting that mud when they could have spent about ten minutes on each tile. I wouldn't even mean that long with the big dozer they had out there, they just didn't bother to finish it, so. I thought they knew what they were doing and they'd be back real soon to level them, but obviously they didn't. So I had to spend about eight hours with my skid loader, so that's, that bill for eight hundred dollars. The rest of it is mostly just because we couldn't plant this spring, didn't think we could ever get it smooth enough to do a decent job, and there's, like Mark said, bands laying all over out there, and we got, if you want to see video of the rocks, we can show you the rocks they left laying out there, it looks like a gravel road. And I gotta clean them up, and I can't get them cleaned up till later, so I'm cleaning a hundred percent damages on the whole with the thing, and I guess I got a map here of what they left, if you want three different maps showing the acreages, they kind of verified that the similar acreages to what you guys listed for damages, but. If you want to look at them.
Like to submit those with this?
You can, yes.
Okay.
So we're claiming another whatever eleven hundred dollars an acre damage on all the land we didn't plant, I guess is what's beyond the eight hundred dollars, plus whatever damages they had listed for uh, construction damages. And then, and then eleven hundred dollars per acre, but they said it was a, a post future damage in the pipe length ten thirty feet, but that's way more than that when you get the holes, we couldn't hardly spread it the other day because there were so many holes in the homes and bumps and rocks and so on out there, so. I don't know what the damages were, total of what, seventeen thousand or something.
Total on this is sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
That, that's after and including what damages you had listed here as part of it, so.
These are just in addition to what's on.
On this.
On that, yeah.
No, no, that's part of it, I think you got. Let me look at that again. This.
Why, because I, I wanted.
This was your construction damage and this is our future damages, so you've actually got the construction damage added to the, and the future damages, that's the total, that's for my wife and me both.
Okay, because I, I wanted to make sure that we were, what was, what was a contractor's responsibility versus what's a project responsibility, some of these damages were unavoidable, whether the contractor had done due diligence or not.
I don't know what. I don't know which the difference would be on it, I guess, to me between the contractor and.
Tyler, can I say what he's got there?
Yep.
Do you need to read it?
Uh, well, that's, it has everything itemized and broken down further.
For each, at each individual farm, I guess, as far as listed as, not by forty acre amounts. Or however you go by it, I guess, is how you do it.
As long as we're talking about damages like that. I thought, I brought up yet, me being on Drainage sixty-six, one sixty-six, I thought we brought up, when we deal with problems of losing prop when we put in tile, we pay everybody the same, and Mr. Stecker agreed with me, I believe, but what I don't understand is why does, at drowned out soybeans, Mr. Johnson gets two sixty-one an acre or be, and why is right next to it, Kyle Rowling gets nine hundred and three dollars on the farm right across the fence? I think that's bullshit.
I mean. So it would be based on the.
He planted it twice, maybe my fault wasn't the prop there.
There'd be, there'd be drowned out acres, every, all the per acre costs are all up here, they are all the same, so it's all based on what was drowned out versus what was planted, what was destroyed, the per acre costs are all, everybody's treated the same for the per acre costs, that's all, those are all up here, it's then taken times the, the areas to get what the damages are. So it's based on what is and isn't drowned out, what's planted. But everyone is treated the same for those different ones.
I just agree. If it's all the same, so then why this is per acre, right there, them damages.
Right, but the.
I think the same.
But the per acres for what your futures, and if you take it all to the end and then divide out based on what, if it was drowned out, or if it was planted, if it was soybeans, if it was corn, how much future damage there was, if you divide it all out at the end, it is going to be a different per acre cost based on what the different areas of damage were, but the areas for damage, times the amount per acre for those different damage types are all the same.
Okay.
And if you'd like, if you'd like it considered differently, because I know that there was conversations about the drowned out going on, we tabulated that all independently. But I know that there was a question about whether or not that was going to be compensated at the last hearing. So. That is something that can also be discussed.
Do you have the date of when we had the original meeting for this, any chance, or, or even that tabulation? I was gonna pull it up in our folder.
Well, I have the, I have the tabulations here, I don't have a, a physical copy.
Okay.
Of it.
Is this, can you read it?
No, not, no, this.
I'm gonna try to look at when that original hearing was. It had been some time ago.
Yeah.
I was gonna say either March or, or first part of April.
Yeah, I think late March. Or first part of April, yeah. So if it's all the same, you got eleven hundred bucks an acre. So on the Richard Johnson farm, you get a total of fourteen hundred dollars an acre off of five point five acres, so whereas fifty-five hundred versus have just some fourteen hundred and some dollars. That ain't eleven hundred, you got eleven hundred dollars an acre right up here for damages.
Because there's, that was only on point four or five acres.
Oh, for next years.
Right, so that's, those are the future damage columns here that go with future amounts, and then the actual constructed, what was run down in the areas, so that's what I'm saying, these are used for these two columns, the future damages used along these columns for how you get your different subtotals and then your totals, so then if you, if you just try to take those totals and divide back out the acres, you'll get what your numbers are, but they won't correlate to any of these up here, because it's all, they're, they're subdivided out.
And I think we did talk about the construction damages, I mean, Tyler had them in different categories, drowned out, corn drowned out, soybeans and all those, and I think we did talk about that, but no action was taken at the last one since we were continuing it to here, so that's still a conversation that's on the table, as far as the corn and soybeans that was drowned out, it's just labeled, labeled separately so we could see that all, um, in the report.
All I know is I brought it up and you agreed with me.
Yep, I, I remembered that as well.
And, and so then, just to clarify everything, a- as far as the, the bills that have been submitted, uh, for additional damages, I think that that is a, is a contractor responsibility. Whereas the amounts that were shown here, whether we go drowned out acres or not, is district, that's unavoidable based on the, the construction of the project, and then in, in the instance where they were combined, it would be the, the difference that would be the responsibility of the, of the contractor. And I'm, and I'm not here to try to defend the, the cleanup work, I, I agree with everything that has been submitted.
Yeah, I think the fact that we had to continue this on its own speaks volumes, uh, on itself, I guess, that's the simplest way I would say it. Um, in regards to the drowned out corn and drowned out soybeans for construction damage, you still have the acres of the area where construction happened for that, correct?
Correct.
If there was drowned out outside of it, it was just part of the field like normal, right?
Uh, would that, the drowned out area is the.
Cause that would just be your label along the timeline, right?
Correct, well, correct, yep.
Yep. Yeah. So I.
Yes, there, there would have potentially been area outside of that that was drowned out.
But it wasn't due to the.
But it was, right.
Yeah.
This is just the area as it relates to the to the project, there may have been drowned out outside of that, but this is what was, this was what acres have drowned out were affected by construction.
And we are waiting till after we close the public hearing for action, right?
That would be the, that would be at the appropriate time, yes.
What do we do about tile hookups that haven't been hooked up?
Uh, as those are discovered, they get, they should get reported, and the contractor will make those connections.
Okay, I report this to the engineer's office.
Okay.
After our last meeting we had on this.
Okay.
Nothing's ever been done.
Okay, I never heard from the engineer's office about anything.
I, I asked him when I left, I said, are you gonna write that down, and he said, we'll remember it.
That's, well, I, I happily get it taken care of, care of for you, I never heard about it.
Yeah.
I mean, because there's been, there's been three or four others that have been done since that last.
Yeah.
Hearing, as, as soon as I hear about them, they're relayed on and they get dumped.
Yeah.
I just never, I just never heard about it.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either, I mean.
I buy it.
Yeah, right, um. Let me, uh.
I called rifles, cause I had two holes out of mine, and they come out and fixed them, they send me a bill for seven hundred and some bucks.
Did you pay it?
I argued with, no, I said, hey, my problem, you didn't hook it up. He said, well, yeah, well, I said, it's right next to the new tile. We, we argued for fifteen minutes, and he finally said, oh, just turn it in on the bill, so. How the jeez, he's supposed to hook it up, he's the one that did the work.
That should not be additional pay by you.
Right, no, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be yours, but now, the contractors are due the, the cost to make the connections per their, per their quantities, like they would have been paid, but as far as like making it a landowner expense, it's not, uh, as far as like additional mobilization to do it, no, because it should have been done at the time, they're due the, the labor it takes to do it.
The flat rate that was in the contract.
Correct, they're due that, but they're not.
But that's still not a payment you would make directly, that would be a district cost.
Correct, so. Thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. And then I'll, we'll make, we'll, before we leave.
Yeah, I can show you where it is.
Perfect.
The one I know. The one I know, one.
Yeah, and, and Tyler touched on it earlier, but the, if the work is accepted today, it would start the maintenance period of one year, so, from today, one year, we would still have maintenance coverage, so.
And.
Don't be shy about reporting something if it comes in, let us know, and we'll get it.
And, and I always say, if I knew about all the ones we missed, we wouldn't have missed any.
Right.
Because that's, that's just the, the way it goes, if I, if I knew, we would, yeah, so, we, we only find out as they come up, so, let us, let us know what we're gonna take over.
Their GPS data of every connection they made.
Yes.
How do you find that?
That is, so we can provide that, or the county has the, is that the collector app, the.
I don't, I don't know if they're all on there, they might be.
They, they should be.
Okay.
They should be, or we have GPS locations of every one that they could be, we have a log of where every one of those was stopped with GPS.
Where's that, where's that log at?
Uh, I could get as though, we have the, as though plans.
The easiest, easiest form would probably be going to Boltman Mink, so.
Come up to, come up to our office.
Okay.
We have that, else I will, uh, I'll get the log to the auditor's office as well, just that has the GPS points. Latin, Latin long of all of that.
My, Tyler, the contractor said he didn't know if there was anything just still there, and I talked to him, so. So I don't know if he did that or not, so, very clear, so.
So what's your point?
What?
What's your point?
I just wanted to make sure it existed, based on if.
So you're gonna call and tell him there is.
When I talked to him, I could tell you, but I don't know. When I talked to him, I could tell you, but I don't know.
Well, he's, he's aware of the same app that the rest of the contractor.
He, he just told me, I said, he said, I don't know if they kept track of it or not, cause he said, I saw over there the Kyle Rollings and they missed an eight inch one, he said, I had put that in, so. And another five or six inch one, he said they missed, and he looked them up, I believe, so I don't know who got paid for that, but. He, he did the work, I know, he said they missed an eight inch, he says, I can't figure out how the hell they could miss an eight inch tile, but they did. And I know, Michael, you got one of those in my yard, maybe show you where that was, that's not a fault, so. Water sitting on top of the ground the other day before, I mean, so.
Yeah. He was supposed to come back.
Huh?
He was supposed to come back and do the.
Oh. Derek, okay, I showed it to him, so he showed it to you, okay.
I knew it was the.
Oh, if, if there's stuff you feel wasn't connected to the tile, you should be letting us know so that we can get Raisles out there, because their responsibility for it.
He's supposed to come out to my place and we're gonna figure it out a couple of different places, if the water ever goes back down again, so.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other damage claims anybody would like to turn in at this point? Otherwise, that was our big purpose of extending this, was to allow people time to get those turned in.
Just as a reminder, I showed this to Tammy, my name's Richard Johnson, they have me double listed for two, good forty acres.
Tammy brought that to my attention, so we're gonna look at it.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reminding us.
Yep. If there's nothing else, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Or the completion hearing, I should say.
So I guess I wanted to ask, uh, when does this decide that the money.
Today, we have a motion on the floor.
We got a motion on the floor, let's get a second and then. Someone want a second, close the public hearing?
You can discuss it after.
Yeah, we discuss as a board and act on it afterwards.
Okay, second by Haas. Any discussion on, on motion?
So all the work with Raisles does, why is he attempting to send a bill, it doesn't seem to.
Well, there's, that would have been for, uh, additional connections, as far as the leveling work or, or additions.
Well, that's, uh, you know.
You're saying the leveling is done with the landowners?
Yes, why is that happening, I don't understand why.
Uh, it, a miscommunication, he shouldn't be, he should be sending those and it should.
Miscommunication between who?
Uh, why, it wasn't, it wasn't anything I told Raisles to do, it would have been something that they understood was the appropriate thing to do.
That doesn't sound very.
It shouldn't have happened.
I agree, and as much business as they, I'm new here, but as much business as they seem to do, uh, uh.
It, it's, it, it's rather inexcusable as far as I'm concerned, especially then to argue. About the payment afterwards, yes.
Alright, point made, we'll go, the next question, so we were here in March and they were complaining about cleanup and ruts and everything. And, and I'm burning a lot of bridges here, I apologize.
Well.
So, so why, why, why didn't it happen between March and now, why didn't?
That's, it.
So these, these bills they're submitting will go against the contractor, not the district?
Correct.
And they all dispute that?
That's our decision as trustees.
That, that, that would be my recommendation, would be to go against, the contractor was given every opportunity for scheduling reasons or. Whether they let the weather get better of them or what have you, I'm not here, I'm not here to answer for that, only that they didn't get it done, the landowners finished it up for them.
Okay.
It should go against the, the retainage.
So how many of the left, I, I, how many of the, are there gonna be people say, gee, I didn't submit my bill for, for time, I don't know how many people are here, aren't here?
I'd, I'd say in general, majority are either here or have probably talked to me or Tyler, so I guess.
That's, notice has gone out twice on this.
Yeah, if anybody didn't turn anything in.
Okay, alright.
Definitely been proper.
Is that gonna make everybody happy if they, if they're damaged?
Nope, I'll take what I can get, but it won't make me happy, I'd have been happy if I could have went out this spring and planted right through it, cause we've got strips where we planted around, put anhydrous around, had to be careful when we sprayed. It's time consuming, but I'm not getting paid anything for having to plant strips next to it, put in rows in and. Come back now, I still gotta go back out and try and pick up them goddamn rocks, so I can farm it and we gotta level it out, I may have to get Mike Cholblum or somebody with a doser to smooth it out, I don't know yet, but. I haven't made up my mind what I am gonna do with it, so no, it's not ever gonna make me happy, I understand that, but something I, you know, to be honest with you. Come last November, I decided, I hope the hell they get out of here and never come back, because they made me that disgusted, so. I wouldn't, I wouldn't hire Fair Raisel, Fair Raisel Excavation to dig a damn outhouse hole for me right now, but that's just my first public hearing right now, so. Not happy with it, let's put it that way, and if I had to do it over again, I don't know if I would went along with it, so, I mean, I said no. Like I said, not happy with the work they did, the quality of the work, or the way they left the mess behind, and the mess behind is the worst part, and I don't know. As sloppy as they were with that, I don't know what the hell they did on the tile itself, but that's where we can't find it, so, you know, in twenty years or thirty years, they did a decent job, I guess, but.
Well, on the tile aspect, I mean, we do have televising reports that show what the pipe looks like from the inside, so at least we can have some confidence with that.
Well. The Blair contracting guy said where he looked for some joints were made or hookups, he said they weren't very good, that's what he told me, so I don't know why I wasn't there. And he said he hooked, what'd he tell you, he hooked the tile plow and some junk they buried and fogged the end of it up or something.
Yeah, it gets into the bands and garbage you throw in the holes, I don't know, that's part of it, I guess, but it's just frustrating for everybody.
I don't know why he couldn't pick those bands up, cause apparently they must have been all over, cause we got a bunch, how many did you say you picked up?
Thirty or forty.
Those steel bands, and I know there's several more out there that we ain't got dug up yet, so. That's just, it's just sloppy, I guess, that, that, that was the biggest disappointment in all this, was just how damn sloppy they were. And I thought they could have come along, cause they skidded over and crowded those rocks up as they went along and buried them as they went, going where they belonged on top of the tile. They just left them on top of the ground, so, all over, it's like I said, we got a video we could show you that looks like a gravel road across our field, so. I can't beat that mess there, and I don't know, maybe other people aren't bothered, or they used smaller rocks at the start of it and bigger ones when they got to our places, I guess, is that. Was that reasoning, I mean, was there a reason to use them bigger rocks when they got further down?
It would have been for, it would have been the sub, subgrade rock where they used that, that was bigger, that's the.
It was all bigger when they got to our place, they just got it from Cholblum over in Armstrong by the truckloads, it was all. I don't know, that thing we picked up already, so. And then if you pick rocks up out of it, it'll be like, I can tell you that, then it'll be a master.
I don't mean to cut anybody off, but it just, we have got a motion and a second, and we're discussing on whether or not to close the public hearing, so. Um, Howard, do you have your questions answered, if you're.
Yep.
Okay. We'll go forward with, uh, roll call vote then, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed and.
Now we can make motions and address the damages, so I think, first thing I'd like to address, on the report Tyler proposed, where the. Construction damages are laid out by each crop, uh, I would make a motion that drowned out corn and drowned out soybeans get paid. The same as corn and soybeans that were not drowned out. To match those, it'd be eleven hundred dollars per acre and seven hundred dollars per acre respectively.
Can I repeat that, Matt, did I have it correct?
Yes, please.
Motion by Stecker, that the drowned out corn and drowned out soybeans get paid the same as those not drowned out, seven hundred. Dollars an acre and eleven hundred dollars an acre respectively.
Yep. I mean, and you, I suppose, could even simplify and say drowned out corn at eleven hundred and drowned out beans are seven hundred. But yeah, you got, you got the right point.
Okay.
Okay, you have a motion then? Second to that?
Haas.
Okay, we have a second by Wacter. Any discussion on Kyle's motion?
This was different than the past?
Um.
Why are we, why are we doing this motion?
So this would be to change the report that the engineers submitted. This, this is their proposals, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, we, so we submitted what, we surveyed out what the areas were that were impacted by the construction. We then made a differentiation between whether it was standing crop or if it was crop that based on rainfalls had been unable to be planted as a result.
Or unable to survive.
Unable, right, had been planted but unable to survive, um, these areas were all disturbed the same. Uh, it was just a differentiation between what had been drowned out versus what had been run down as a result.
Was there a difference in compensation?
Uh, on the report, I had recommended no compensation for what had been drowned out. This, this would compensate it all the same across the board with caution.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussions on that motion? If not, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes. Motion carried.
Then, I guess, as far as addressing the damages that were turned in today, is there a way that we can. Tabulate them versus, um. The original damages that would have been caused from any sort of construction versus the damages that were additional expenses due to.
About the only one that I was concerned about was the one.
Or the scalds.
Right, was the one that was combined. Um. These, these two. As well as, as well as these, this one, uh, I think are pretty, pretty clear that that's just the amount. This would be, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's, it would be the difference versus what was on these. Uh, parcels in the engineer's report, correct? Okay, so that, it would be the.
The original damages for this year that we couldn't plan, I guess, beyond, above, beyond what you recommended.
Okay, so.
So would we be able to take the acres for corn and soybeans for each of theirs?
I, I think if you just, I think if you tallied all of those properties.
No, cause we changed drowned out soybeans to seven hundred versus zero, so I think if we took our acres, totaled up the acres by each. And did math, we could get that probably pretty quick.
Okay.
Would that be? If you added up all their acres for corn and beans for each of their parcels, get your total acre count, and then multiply by their payment rate?
Yeah, except if we're, was this before or after considering that, the drowned out, I suppose?
I don't think, this is, this year's damages, so there's no drowned out, I'm involved in them, so, I don't know what the, I guess would be after, would. The, the, your figure was before it was, you're in drowned out, was added in now, my figure would be everything this year, so.
Doug, are you just looking for one year's worth of crop damages across everything again, is that, that's basically what you were saying, right?
Yeah, I just figured eleven hundred dollars an acre on those where the map showed. That we didn't get it planted.
Oh, so we just found there, there's one field you have harvested soybeans and it was harvested corn.
Okay, can you, which, which spot on the report, what parcel number is that?
Uh, twenty, section twenty-five.
Oh, one dash twenty-five dash one hundred dash oh two.
Okay, that's third, third.
That's supposed to be harvested corn, right there, yes.
I don't suppose we get anything for being harvested corn?
No, I understand, I'm just saying there's there, so.
Okay.
But there was some of that was drowned out of corn, too.
Right, but she's got, it's down there somewhere.
I don't, or the.
I don't know.
Three fourths of an acre. Yeah, it says harvested soybeans instead of harvested corn.
But yes, we're basically looking for.
Okay, so that, yeah, that.
Crop damage plus eight hundred dollars worth of skid loader work.
Okay.
Those last year's damage.
Right.
So if we totaled up all their acres times eleven hundred?
Cause the first four parts, parcels there, including the Linda.
So we got point one four. Four, three, point. Seven, seven. One point three six and four point eight nine, is that correct?
Yes.
Ten point one six is total acres that I got, times eleven hundred is eleven thousand one seventy-six.
So then, what, what was that you had down?
So I, I had eleven thousand one seventy-six plus the eight hundred for skid loader work would be one, eleven thousand nine seventy-six. For a total damage plan.
And the total on this was sixteen thousand nine forty-three?
Do we want them to just write something quick on here and update this?
I, I guess I'm just, right, I would need a little bit of clarification as to what was then going to be contractor responsibility.
By my math, I would say eleven nine seven six would be contractor responsibility, and then the rest would follow the chart as presented and.
To, to get to this.
It would eventually get to that, yeah.
Right, okay.
Well, it'd be more than that.
It would actually go past that.
Get up to the column, the local column, and plus the eleven thousand, you're gonna end up with more than what I got, so.
Yep. So you got some notes on there for that?
I, I don't know, I, do you wanna?
So the eleven thousand nine seventy-six is being added to the others from today, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That would be, right, it wouldn't be this claim, it'd be the eleven thousand that is getting added to.
So that's the total, like a.
That's the total for all these, right?
For all four of these, that.
Okay, so the, the total additional damages, Tammy's come up with fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Could you get them to sign that quick, just so we have it confirmed in the records?
Hey, I wonder if you wanted it, after we just put in.
Yeah, no, that's great, yeah, just as long as it has a signature on it.
Okay, so then you add the total of all those that would have been new damages turned in.
Yes. Yes, fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Fifteen.
Six ninety-nine seventy.
Okay. Um. So then, can we do it all in one batch, in one group that way?
I, I, I believe so, it would be, uh, accepting the damages as they have been altered. Based on the previous.
As discussed.
Right, as discussed, and then, um, withholding of these additional damages from that. Retainage.
Okay, yep, I would make that motion to accept the damages as presented and discussed today with a total of fifty. Okay, yep, I would make that motion to accept the damages as presented and discussed today with a total of fifteen thousand six ninety-nine and seventy cents and withhold those from the contractor's retainage. In addition to accepting the damages presented by Bolton and Mink as modified.
Can you repeat that last part again after withhold from the contractor's retaining?
Yep, in addition to accepting the damages as presented by Bolton and Mink as and modified. Because our previous motion would have addressed the modification.
Okay, can I repeat that?
Yep.
Please do.
Okay, motion by Stecker to accept the damages as presented and discussed and withhold. Okay, wait a second, accept damages as presented and discussed in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents and withhold from the contractor's retainage in addition to accepting damages as presented by Bolton and Mink and modify.
Yes.
Everyone understand that motion, and we'll need a second then.
Like, second up, we're discussing, I guess.
Okay, motion by Haas, discussion?
No, second.
First, sorry, second by Haas, discussion?
Contractor have mechanism to dispute this?
There, they could, there'd be a way to.
They'd win one out.
To challenge it, I, I suppose I've never, never seen them challenge it, it would be, I've never seen any contractor challenge it, I suppose it would be a.
They were aware of the date for this hearing, right?
Right.
That's what I was gonna ask too, were they invited to come, yeah?
I, I suppose it would, I mean, to get right down to the answer, it would be a civil issue at that point if they wanted to dispute it. I think, I think some of this is pretty, pretty difficult to, to dispute.
I feel like I'm asking stupid questions, burning bridges, but this is the first time that this kind of problem's ever showed up with this particular contractor or it's a continuing thing? And they just accepted damages as the cost of doing business, or, or how's it gonna change in the future, or in the, in the next?
I, I think this, this, in these instances, it was, there were some pretty egregious misses, and I think this sends the appropriate message as far as the tightening up.
Yep, uh, as far as how it could change in the future, I think there's been, I mean, there's a current project they're working on which would be similar, and there's been messages relayed to them that situations like this cannot be repeated under any circumstances, I, I've, I, I, I would hope that that doesn't happen again, but if, if it does, that's something that the board should take into consideration when we accept bids.
And I invite them to watch the recording of this, see the feelings.
I wouldn't be, if I was the landowner slash farmers, I wouldn't be excited about picking up steel bands. I wouldn't be excited about plowing up steel bands that were thrown in the hole, I mean, there should be, there should be removed from the site, not thrown in the hole.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point to you next time as oversight, or maybe this time even, so, anyway, enough of that, I apologize.
Okay, any further discussion then? Not a roll call vote, please?
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you all for coming in.
Well, was there actually something that, that formally accepted the, the work?
Need a, I'll make a motion to formally accept the, the completion of the work and release the retainage thirty days after this hearing.
Okay, good motion.
Or the remainder of the retainage, I should say.
Second by Haas. Discussion. Yeah, can I roll call vote, please?
Um, can I repeat the motion first?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Um, because I wasn't sure what he said, um, motion by Stecker, second by Haas, to formally accept the completion of the project?
Yep.
Okay, and release the remainder of the retainage.
Yep, thirty days after.
Thirty days after.
What was the original?
Thirty days after.
Hey, just a second, for.
Thirty days after.
Thirty days after today.
Today.
After, okay. Okay. Okay, now you wanna roll the vote?
Go for it.
All right, Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, anything else Tyler, or?
Uh.
Good on this subject.
Good on this subject.
Okay.
See you again in an hour.
As, as discussed, if anyone has any other issues with tile or connections that need to be made or whatever, please let me and Tyler know, and we will get those taken care of, so.
Who would I have to talk to about the rate that this was assessed at?
The rate that it was assessed at? Are you, you mean like the benefit that your land received from it, from the, from the qualification?
The reclassification? Yeah.
That would, I mean, we would have already discussed.
Yeah, we, I could discuss with you how those numbers will come to, if there was a, a hearing on, on those. In, in short, it's based on calculations of benefit and what the numerical values for distances and amount of facility used and wetness that are used to calculate what the assessment schedule is. And we could go into more detail.
Yeah, if, if you wanna talk with Tyler outside, I mean, he's got, like you said, an hour before the next one, so he's able to chat with you a little bit.
Okay, touch up, uh, your part.
Sounds good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we are up to discussion, decision, review, and approve claims and conservation claims, I need a motion when you're ready. If everyone's looked at them.
Done.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin. Any discussion on the claims?
Uh, yeah.
Questioning?
Okay.
If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. We'll sign them here in a minute. Uh, the budget status report, everyone had a chance to look at that, last one of the year, fiscal year.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the Fair Board, are they not getting their money?
They, um, so according to the rules that have been established, they're supposed to ask, request the money and then turn in their reports and pictures, all that kinda stuff, um, they have not officially done that. Um, I do know that Melissa, I believe, made a phone call, um, and let him know that, as far as I know, he still has not come in.
Okay.
So, okay, so, I mean, what happened, I guess we need to think about what happens if they don't. And, you know, I don't think we should be amending the budget if, to give them the additional if they don't come in. And just throwing my thought out there, if that's, if they're not following it. I was just curious why it hadn't been, you know, done yet, okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions on the report? If not, we'll let the record reflect that we acknowledge that, and also acknowledging the transfers made by the Sioux County Auditor from General Basic to Secondary Road in the amount of two thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, and from Rural Basic to Secondary Road in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents, transfers made on June second. Acknowledge those, and then Dan, finally, we are up to you. Been waiting so patiently over there.
That's all right, I learned something about your age. Need a whole lot of work.
Are you ready for the quiz?
No. I'll have to go do some more study. Well, as of May thirty-first, uh, out of the office, I was looking at thirty-four telephone calls, uh, fifty-three messages with voicemail, email, snail mail, had thirty-one walk-ins, thirty appointments, submitted ninety-six forms for action to the VA, currently tracking one thousand three active, uh, files in the database out of a total of twelve sixty. Um, I've got thirty-three claims currently in the system, three that are ready for decision, thirteen that I'm developing, uh, two that are in the sales lane that I'm working on. Insofar as training, I had completed, uh, some online training for elements necessary for service connection for disability compensation for veterans. Uh, I'm currently registered for the National Conference in Kentucky, uh, in July, so that'll be next month. Uh, we did complete our mobile medical unit visit here in June, uh, I believe we had six veterans with one walk-in, and the next one is scheduled for four August, and, uh, currently working with VA to get the, the twenty twenty-six dates lined up for the medical unit to come up here, so I gotta do some calendar checking and availability of the election center for that, so. Currently for the, uh, the claim that should have been, it's a typo, says April, that should be May. Uh, the monthly awards at that time were a little over seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, retro benefits thirty-seven thousand four seventy-one. Uh, year-to-date monthly award benefits forty-eight thousand one seventy-six thirty-seven, and retro benefits of a hundred and thirty-one thousand seventeen. You have the ad hoc reports there, not too much of a change other than some of the stuff for the burial, because unfortunately we lost three veterans in about a ten-day period. Um, I've got some claims that are suspended because I can't submit them until in-earnment or internment takes place. Uh, and some of that will start in July with some of the in-earnments, so I'm still waiting on that. Uh, I've got one annex left of my COOP plan, and then I'm gonna reengage and visit, uh, with EMS or EMA, uh, take a look at that and also kinda get some input from my commissioners. Missed you the other night there, Carter, for the swearing.
Coming up this Friday?
No, we are, no, that was last Thursday, yeah, will you be available, someone be available in July? I just, we just, we just pushed it back to July.
That was last week?
Mm-hmm, Thursday.
Did you put it on the wrong date?
I put it on the wrong date, Dan.
No, did you?
I'm so sorry about that.
But that's.
You should have called me.
Well, that's okay, that's okay, I figured that you guys are pretty busy, but our next meeting is ten July at four forty-five.
Tenth of July?
Tenth of July.
At four forty-five.
Yep. That's all right, we, 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 uh, inculcated Mr. Hart's horn just fine with me, so, he's, he's all set, gonna go. Um, I'm also working.
That's at the annex?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't written down.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll just do it again next month, it'll be fine. I'm still working with my contractor to, uh, see about getting a bid, uh, for the electronic scanning of grade book number four. I've got five, I've got one through three done, so I'm just looking at getting four, and then I did have a book, uh, Veterans in the World War from Kousouk County, looks like a lot of it World War One. So I might just see if he'll give me a bid on that to see what that, that would look like, so, um, still working with him on that. I've got some training where the Green County VSO will be coming up to my office in July, will be doing some training at her request, uh, so that'll take place. And, uh, still awaiting our, uh, GDX report from the federal government, so I can get more detailed information at the county level for twenty twenty-four, so. Soon as I get it, I'll, I'll provide that to you all, and you'll have the latest and greatest updates, but that's really all I got, uh, from my office for the month of May. June's been pretty benty thus far, highly successful, and on average, I think I'm getting about three to four VA claims rated and completed in a little over a week's time, which is really good, so hopefully they'll keep that up, but subject to your questions, that's really all I have. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
July tenth, annex.
July tenth, annex.
Four forty-five. Forty-five.
Yeah.
Not the seventeen.
Yes, not the seventeen.
My gosh, all right, thanks, Dan. Okay. Too many different things in the calendar sometimes. All right, um, discussion, decision to approve cigarette permits for Haybait of Iowa and Spring Valley Golf Course. Need a motion for this? A lot of different claim packets this morning.
Yeah.
Uh, motion by Haas. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Whacter, oh, sorry, we'll get Garmin in there, second by Garmin. Uh, okay, any discussion on the permits? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay, motion carried. Okay. Okay. And discussion, decision, longevity wording for employees on wage scale resolution.
So, next week, um, you'll be looking at this res- solution in whole to approve, um, before the new fiscal year, but it has brought, been brought to my attention that the standalone longevity schedule says it's for all full-time employees, and we have full-time employees that do not receive longevity, so we either need to, one, um, decide if those employees should be receiving longevity, or two, if not, change the wording, um, so that it is appropriate. Um, I did send an email out to Ann at Ehlers and Cooney, asking if there was a reason, because most of the people that aren't getting longevity, not all, but most, are like deputies, um, in my office, in the recorder's office, treasurer's office, um, and I asked Ann if there's a reason they can't, and she said, no, deputies in offices, according to Iowa Code three thirty-one point nine oh four, can receive longevity. So, um, that's what I wanted to talk about today, which direction you wanna go, do you, do you want to leave it at full-time and have those employees that aren't receiving longevity receive it, or do you wanna change the wording?
Is it only deputies that don't receive it?
Um, I, I, I think Lisa in, um, Doug's office does not, are, do the, your other engineers in the office, Doug, receive it? Longevity?
No employee, no full-time employee in the Kousouk County Engineers Office receives longevity pay.
And, and elected officials cannot receive longevity, but otherwise, um.
Does like.
I don't think anybody, conservation gets it either.
Say, assistant, assistant attorney, Stephanie, does she get?
Um, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think so, but I'm not a hundred percent confident.
Is there a reason why nobody in the engineer's office gets longevity, or just how it's always been?
I, I don't know the background.
When the resolution, my, based on my recollection of when the first resolution was passed, I asked the question, the board said that that did not apply to the engineer's office.
Okay. But no reason was given?
I do not remember.
At the time?
I think in the sake of the conversations that we've talked about having, and we haven't had that yet, but if there's other, um, more significant changes to the longevity and structure of it, I think that would be better to address any changes to longevity at that point in time, so. I think we should clarify our wording and move forward in the current stance that we have, at least for now, but.
No.
If we're, if we're talking about making changes to the package as a whole, I think it would be easier to address when we're having a bigger con. I think it would be easier to address when we're having a bigger conversation about that.
Okay.
Sure, I was just, I was just curious on who got what and why.
Yep, yep, I'm not opposing any questions today, that's just my thoughts right now. I think it'd be simpler to clarify language to what we're currently doing, and if any major changes are happening, we could address it when we're talking. Kinda more.
So do you.
Well, we couldn't, I, I mean, in all fairness, how are we gonna tackle anything major? The budget's already set, but I would agree, all employees, if we're gonna do it, all employees should get the longevity. It's not, I mean, especially if the deputies can, if that's been clarified. I didn't realize that they could, but, um, you know. I don't know, is it, it, will it affect the budget largely if, if we put it in right now? That they would? I mean, what kind of money are we talking?
Yeah, I haven't done, I haven't done the figuring, so I don't know. Um, but we do have some deputies who have been here quite a while, um.
Yeah. I think that'd be the first reason, I'd say we probably shouldn't do anything with it now, because it would affect the budget now, how much we, what we have to do on math for, so I don't know any of that, but. If we're, if we're talking about making other changes to longevity, I think those would probably apply for the next budget year, not the current one we're about, or the one we're about to start. So I think those would correlate, not necessarily directly just with budget season, but I think it would, it would correlate with next, the following upcoming fiscal year, FY twenty-seven, for any changes, I guess, in my opinion, so.
Okay, so with that being said, can, do you, can it be read as standalone longevity schedule for take out all, and just put for full-time employees currently receiving longevity?
Yeah, that would probably be simple.
Does that?
That would clarify it.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think that we should, I mean, not try and put stuff on your calendar already that you don't even have yet, probably, Tammy, but, um, that should probably be discussed at, you know, budget time.
Sure.
And then maybe we could talk about the wording and stuff and what's gonna be in it then versus, you know, this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think it probably would even be good to discuss prior to the start of budget season, at least maybe look at some outlines, look at some numbers as possibilities, whatever that may entail. But I think even if we started that conversation before every department submitting budgets, that would probably be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, probably would.
Okay, so for now, we'll just change it to the schedule for full-time employees currently receiving longevity as follows, and then I'll put it on the calendar to talk about prior budgets. Okay?
Uh, do.
Doug.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't see Doug.
I don't know how the, the road department employees receive longevity, are you talking about the road department employees? To me, it, with all due respect, this is, this, does this resolution apply to anyone other than somebody in an office of an elected official?
It applies to everybody but those that have a union contract, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, then, I would ask why people that don't have a union contract have been left out of this benefit for whatever, the last two years? Cause that's not what was, that was not how the question was answered two years ago.
It was just two years.
How was it, how was, how was it answered two years ago?
It is not gonna apply to the Cassuth County Engineers Office.
Well, and, and I, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of term, but when the resolution was first adopted, it was adapted to fix an issue that we had. So at that time, it was, um, something that was just fixing the issue. Now going forward, we're trying to change it so that all those missing pieces that were missing are now complete. So, um, I think the answer probably has changed, because the resolution wasn't adequate at the beginning, because of the reason for it to start, does that make sense?
It was more, it was more focused on the beginning.
Yes, so does that make sense?
No.
Okay, sorry.
It seems like there's still. There's, there's a lot of ambiguity. And the Cassuth County Engineers Office is, was not included, it's still not included. You're talking about all employees, you're not talking about all employees.
I agree.
And I think if you're gonna create something, you be specific enough, cause. It, you. If it's dealing with people that work in elected officials' offices, which I believe is the case, then just say it belongs to employees that are employed in elected officials' offices. Or make it so it's all employees, like it read prior, and then allow all employees to receive the benefit. I believe right now it says all full-time employees, might not even say full-time.
It does say full-time.
Okay. I mean, what, what is the, what is the board's? What is the intention of the board's supervisors? To give longevity to all employees, or give employee, just certain employees, and, I mean, say clerks in the auditors, recorders, treasurer's office, if you want. If that's who is supposed to be getting the longevity, put it in there.
Well, I can only speak for myself in saying that, you know, I don't, my intentions probably unclear at the moment, because I didn't really realize that this was, you know, an issue until, you know, at budget time, when we started discussing about things like with Lisa's wage, and that was just kinda all thrown, thrown out the window. And, you know, I don't think it's fair to not give everybody longevity, now that I see that this is an issue, but I, I realize also that it can't be fixed, and that can't be adjusted in a day, but. I mean, my intentions going forward is to be fair to everyone, and I do think it's unfair to just kinda, I don't know, it almost seems like signaling out of a department and not giving that is wrong.
I agree with you.
We've got, we've got a lot of longevity in some of those people down in the engineer's office. I think it's a shame that we don't give to everyone that same benefit.
I agree.
Did the engineer's office receive longevity prior to two years ago, then?
No.
No, okay.
Never have.
Uh, and next question then would be, do our other non-elected department heads, they receive longevity? Such as Phil, such as Corey, such as.
I don't think so.
No.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Well, then I would like, can I, I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody?
No.
I think some had, there's a lapse, I wasn't trying to.
No, go ahead.
Um, I think prior to, um, there might not have been longevity down in the engineer's office, but they also had a different scale, wage scale of how things were figured. I, I'm sorry if I can't think of the exact terms that Doug uses, but, um, we're, we didn't follow that this year, I know that. What he presented, we did not follow, and I'm, I'm gonna assume maybe it wasn't followed a couple of years prior.
Correct.
So even though they weren't getting longevity, they might have been compensated in another way, because they followed a different scale, and that kinda got thrown out the window, too. So, I mean, that's. I mean, am I seeing that incorrectly?
No.
Doug?
You are not, you are speaking correctly.
So, I mean, I think that's, you know, created now a, another issue that we have, so.
And yeah, as we've talked before, we're gonna, I think it was the board's intention to make changes to longevity, um, in more ways than one here, and, and it's pretty clear we need to, so. That's definitely a conversation we'll have going forward. But today, clarifying the language would be a good, good start.
Need a motion on that, or?
No, he's, you'll approve it next week, um, as, with the changes I made.
You're just wondering.
So I'm, I just didn't wanna make any changes without.
Wanted verbal approval.
Yes, exactly.
Yep. Okay. Well, then, no action taken on that, and we'll discuss that more next week. Okay, discussion decision, appointment of Isabel Grimm, West Bend Library Board Member representing Cassuth County. Oh.
She representing Cassuth County, or is she representing West Bend?
She's the Cassuth County representative.
To what?
To the library.
Library Board.
What library Board?
The West Bend.
I get it now, I didn't.
West Bend Public Library.
I understand, I said in there there was a representative from, okay, I understand.
Yep.
I didn't until just now, I.
No, you're good.
When I read through it three times, I, I didn't get it, and, okay, I get it now.
Yep. I'll make a motion to appoint Bell Grimm, or Isabel Grimm, to West Bend Library Board, representing Cassuth County.
I'll second.
Second by sticker, any discussion on the motion? If not all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, discussion decision, possible close session per Iowa Code twenty-one five one C, solutions contract.
Can we take a break before we go into that?
Yeah, thank you.
And with Amber not being here to sign the claims, how does that, well, she needs to.
We have, we already have at least three, so they're still approved, but she could sign them later if she wants to, otherwise I don't think it matters. I don't, I don't know if you have any strong desire there, Amber, but as far as signing the claims, she could do them later.
No, I, no, if I don't care either way, I can always, um, sign them at some point if she would like me to.
Yeah, I, but as far as our, our records, we would have three signatures on it, so.
Okay.
We should be covered.
Okay, thank you.
December thirty-first, correct.
Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The moratorium, you.
No, 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 he voted no.
No, power vote, no.
Yeah.
No, that was.
I voted for the second, yeah, it's a.
That was.
Oh, that was second, third, great, okay.
Yep, there was two portions.
Yeah, there were three motions, it was two motions.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, we'll just say voted no, voted unanimous. I'm helping, thank you. What part did you vote no to, Howard? For the moratorium?
Waiting, waiting, I was.
Waiting, second, third.
Were you in the second? Thanks.
Hey, Ma.
A little excited in the instructions.
Shut that, I'm gonna chase everybody down.
I was playing. I mean, it isn't, there's just been a lot of activity the last week and a half, and there's a lot, gonna be a lot of activity in the next two months. We have to, I mean, just to jump through all of these.
Oh, to get the money? Oh, there's something you're getting out of this.
Well, there's a chance.
Yeah.
Yes, there's a chance that it may, may or may not be there, yes.
Okay, all right.
But, and that's, we discussed already.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know, we talked about that, they've been really, a while ago, okay, so I'll check that out, okay, I'll.
Whatever.
Yeah, sure.
Hey, Brandon.
Hey, man.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good, are you all closed up yet, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
July eighth.
July eighth.
Yeah.
That's. What did they do for that?
They called a reversal, so they just, they took my small test night back up to my larger test night.
Okay.
And they closed me up, and make sure I didn't make sure everything works, working, cleaning, working. Yeah.
For lack of a better term.
Eat, eat beer bras for a day, and eat some solid foods, and I think once I, you know, pass the school, I think I can get to leave, mom.
Every all that.
Yeah.
What's checklist?
They're doing a colonoscopy the week before the surgery, so colonoscopy, that looks good.
Oh, okay.
Which is weird, they don't, I was reading it on the portal last night, they don't actually schedule a surgery to, um, the night before.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which seems, uh, but we're, we're planning on staying up there Monday night, if it's early surgery, we're already there, just.
I have whatever, what do you call it, back something to your throat.
A lot of people have that, where they throw a throat stretch, because eating food is.
Yeah, anyway, uh, so, last year, my, my physical, Indian physical, uh, PA told me goes well, we're, we haven't done, uh, whatever, endo-wa, endectomy or whatever. So they're gonna do both, uh, and scheduled after this one, the, the colonoscopy and the endoscope, the other one. And I said, well, make sure they do the throat one first, and they use the same tool.
I don't think it'll be the same tool.
There you, I always say that, but yeah, yeah. So I'll be probably, after we do our, all the health draws or whatever, I will.
Tony, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Getting ready for the colonoscopy. Do you, do you have a lot of product for colonoscopy, like right now, or are you, are you a woman who dieting?
I give you a lot of different, but different, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that, that's our.
Last time I pulled out a chocolate.
Oh, yeah, you just gotta watch your score.
Yeah, I just, I, I put it in my throat. I have really much breath.
Derek, is Todd coming up?
What's that?
Todd coming up?
No, trial, we have a trial on my case, this is on court. Yeah, I think I was gonna go, but it's blank. We'll talk.
Yeah, they said this one looks a bit harder than your kid, and, 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 we're only-
Oh, really?
I guess.
Amber, are you on? She's there.
Not yet.
She's muted, she ain't working on, getting that.
Okay, dark, yep, I'm there.
Oh, yeah, you're here. Okay, we're all back then, uh, we'll need a motion to go into closed session then. Motion, Stecker, second Haas.
Can you please say why we're going to closed session?
Going into closed session per Iowa Code twenty-one point five one C.
For the Solutions-
For the Solutions Contract.
A lot of fun, just did some of the work and stuff.
Yep. Okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.